It's a rowdy bunch tonight. Can I get a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Are they streaming?
Yeah, they gave me the signal.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, no, I waited. We are starting with Mary G Clarkson, right?
Mary G Clarkson.
To discuss Battle of the Buses.
I was over visiting Mary G Clarkson a couple of weeks ago and she was talking about all the great things going on, all the smiling faces with the students, and one of the things that they've started not only this year, but actually an extension of last year is Battle of the Buses. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Lentini and friends to kind of talk about all the great things happening there.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us to share our positive bus initiative at Mary G Clarkson, also known as Battle of the Buses. So, better known, oh, better known as Battle of the Buses. So, joining me tonight, I have Ms. Kaylee Navara, our assistant principal. I have Dr. Kirsten Hall, our school psychologist, and I have Jackie Pascarella, our PE teacher extraordinaire. So, when I started at Mary G last year, I was kind of taken back by all of the bus dismissal referrals. We were averaging about two to three a week. So, you know, and looking closely at it and talking to the students. And sometimes I would get there and the incident would have happened the day before or two days before. And it's very hard to investigate a situation with a kindergartner that happened two days ago. So, we, you know, just in talking with some of the staff, I did start to talk with Dr. Hall, who shared with me that the year before, she and the library teacher, Mrs. Van Aken, had already started to kind of go into classrooms and read about respectful bus riding. And in that sense, we wanted to really continue that momentum. We, as a primary building, serve as the foundation for the educational well-being of our students, that foundation for social emotional growth, and that behavioral beginning for them. But it also extends beyond that into real-life experiences like the bus. So, we decided, just like anything else at Mary G Clarkson, we decided to form a committee, a positive bus committee, to help launch this, to continue the momentum and to launch this initiative. So, we created a committee of the ladies here with us tonight. And also, I have to give a shout out to Joanne Tempanaro, who is our reading teacher, Lysanne Flaherty, our behaviorist, Jackie Morales, our E N L teacher, and Yedira Mendez, our retired social worker. We met together in about, in around October, the end of October, and we really discussed that positive approach. You know, we didn't just want a consequence and call parents and talk to the bus drivers. We wanted to kind of make it a friendly competition. And in that, we wanted to reinforce the rules of bus riding, realizing that especially our kindergartners, do they know how to ride the bus? Do they know that we can't scream across the aisles? Do they know that we should be seated and putting on our buckling, you know, our buckles? We know that they go through the bus safety with the bus drivers every two, every, you know, twice a year, but are they really internalizing that? We also wanted to encourage it in being a space for respect and responsibility and an opportunity for them to, you know, show kindness. Get on your bus and say good morning to your bus driver. Do you know your bus driver's name? Say good morning, say thank you as you exit the bus. They have such an important role in all of this and, you know, you want to, we want to appreciate them, show their appreciation, show our appreciation to them. So, you know, in all of that, and also obviously reduce the unsafe behaviors. And on top of that, turn it into a friendly competition where we would reward all of those good role models and reward that group team effort. So, we took the ball and we kind of ran with it. And now, I have Jackie Pascarella, who's going to share with us how she got the bus drivers on board.
So, every morning, I go to Panera to get my coffee. And all the bus drivers congregate there and they have their coffee. So, I approached them and I said, hey, talk to your friends on Friday. Let's meet here. I'm going to tell you about our bus incentive that we're going to put forward. So, on Friday, they all showed up. And I brought the bus bucks. And I said, hey, this is what's going to happen. We need to fix the behaviors on the bus. So, every bus driver is going to get a stack of dollar bills, bus bucks. And when you see a kid doing a great job or walking off or being kind or being helpful, you're going to give them a dollar. And they're walking off with something tangible. They have it and they got it and they were rewarded immediately. So, where were we going to put these dollar bills? And every bus had a different color. So, we had to figure out who was going to be what. I was in charge of walkers and we had white. And the walkers said, what? Because we wanted the walkers to like, yeah. Because I want to win at everything I do. You know me, I'm very competitive. So, we made this, this actual bus. And they would come down the hall and they would put that bus buck right into the bus, okay? And then after a while, Kaylee did a lot of counting of the dollar bills. And then we would figure out who was the winner that, that month. So, from there, I mean, it was, it was a lot of hands-on because we had to do a lot of counting. And then we had to redistribute. You know, I talked to the buses at Panera, how's it going? Did you see improvement? Some of them in the beginning, I have to tell you, they were like, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. You know, some of them just came in with, and now they were like, it's working, I need more, I need more. So, then we're like, I was like, okay, I'll see you in the morning. I'll redistribute all the, all the money. I'll give you more dollars to give out. And it really changed things for us.
So, on to year two, Dr. Hall.
So, year two, we tried to take that and move it into more of a technological stance. Because what happened with the bus bucks is there were some buses that were doing so well. We're handing out bus bucks and now the next day, we're out of bus bucks. So, we need to keep like replenishing. So, with the move to having it on the computer, it's a shared drive. So, everyone has access to it now, not only us at bus duty, but also all of the classroom teachers. So, when they're doing dismissal at the end of the day, it's up on the smartboard for all the kids to see. And it gives some of the power back to the teachers as well. Because while the kids are waiting, instead of it just kind of being a free-for-all, we're looking for which bus is, you know, showing me the best positive behavior. And the teachers are able to give it too. And you'll see in the picture, we have our laptops out while we are distributing the bus bucks at the end of the day. And we're stationed throughout the building. They're there for walkers, they're there for the mini buses, we're there for the big buses being dismissed at the end of the day. And my job is right above there on the top of the stairs. And they get so excited. They know the difference between when I'm holding my laptop and they're like, Dr. Hall, I'm bleeding right now. You know, and they get very excited and very motivated by it. And as soon as they see me, they're like, oh, I got it. We're all walking so nice and quietly. Versus if I'm just standing there and I don't have the laptop, they're like, all right, no bus bucks today. We're just going to run down the hallway. And it's like that visual for them, seeing it in their classrooms and then carry throughout the entire dismissal process is really motivating for them.
We don't have to get 1099 out of them, right?
No, we're good, we're good.
I buy them coffee.
So, our live bar graph system provides that immediate feedback, right? We had to ensure that we continue to have this buy-in. So, when we, the year prior, when we had those tangible bus bucks, you know, they would have that instant gratification. But, you know, as soon as it was put in the box, they didn't, they weren't able to track their bus and really know how much they were earning until later in the month, when it was announced over a loudspeaker. And it was almost like we were losing the buy-in, we were losing the visual to keep them hooked. So, now this live bar graph system, the points are automatic. As soon as the points are edited on the, the two columns there, it's instant. It's live, all the bar graphs will shift, they'll have a huge jump. You can hear the classes, they're all watching live.
Turning to dismissal.
Right? And it's this, we're all cohesive. The whole building at the same time is rewarding positive behavior. And it's created, teachers are sharing that, my students are making connections. Right now, in second grade, they're learning graphing skills. So, now they're bringing that component in of, oh, now we're using this in our school to keep track of our behavior. And teachers have said, you know, even them sitting on the rug, we're not playing a video and, you know, just waiting for time to pass, we're engaged. And they know when their bus is called, immediately it's like, okay, now it's my time to shine. Because as soon as I step out of this room, I know that my friends are going to be watching my bar graph move in the classroom. And so, as they come down the hallways, they'll check in and be like, well, did we earn any yet? But the five seconds that they walk down the hallway, you know, they need that instant gratification. But here are some, just some pictures of in the classroom, you know, what that looks like. Jump in, they're pointing it out, you know, their locked eyes on that screen. And so, it's just great to hear and see in the classrooms.
And then results-wise, we have seen a significant decrease in those bus discipline reports. So, yeah, so I looked back at 2023, 2024. On record, we had 78 discipline reports in K one and two, a lot of repeat offenders. 2024, 2025, we had 34 reports. So, 24 of those were September to December. We actually launched this in January as a, almost like a New Year's resolution type thing. So, then only 10 were from January to June. And this year, 2025, 2026, we only have four and they are in kindergarten. And not to make excuses, but kindergartners do need a little hand-holding in the beginning.
And they're new to the bus bucks program.
And they're new to the bus bucks and they're new to buses. Again, you know, U pre-K does not have buses. So, they just need that little reminder, you have to stay seated, we can't, you know, run around on the bus. So, again, this continued focus on that positivity has really launched such a wonderful initiative. And, and having all the staff buy-in is remarkable. Having the bus drivers and that open communication with them is also wonderful because, you know, we'll get out there and bus nine will come over and just say, hey, can you give my bus a pep talk? And the second, we'll get on, you know, it's like, whoa, whoa, we got to, you know, button up. So, again, that's, that's all, all good things. So, we're ending with a video from last week. So, we do our Friday morning award ceremony. And that's when we announce we do our lunch, lunch and recess winners, we do our bus bucks, we do birthdays. It's like, it's, it really takes all day. But we do announce them in the morning and then we have a big dismissal for them in which the winning bus does parade out with the golden bus trophy. And they keep it on their dashboard for the week. So, I, we are going to play that for you. I'm actually going to play you the good video that Christina just showed us. And special shout out, I wanted to make sure we got everybody out. Our new social worker, Ricky Galindo, actually took this footage for us.
It is time to get serious here with our sunglasses and our special hats. All right, Mary G, our winning bus of the week. This week's winning bus is... Drumroll please. Bus number 16! Beautiful golden trophy on the dashboard of bus 16. We are so proud, you, you shining. A bus, the rocky theme song plays over the loudspeaker. And then the bus drivers wait to see.
Continuing this initiative and possibly moving forward with AAA next year, we know that they launch a program for school leaders, you know, in second grade and having bus monitors, walker monitors. But we're excited to continue along with it and really just share the positivity all around. But we just wanted to thank you all for letting, for being here tonight as we share our story. And a very happy Board Appreciation Month to all of you. Thank you for all you do for our children. We wouldn't be able to do anything that we do without you, so thank you. And I'd give you the trophy, but I have to give it back to 16, they were not happy.
He saw me walk out with it.
Can I ask one question? Are you finding that some of the bus drivers are really generous with the bus bucks? And some are a little like stingy?
We did last year.
Like, I can see some just being, just trying to do the right thing. And others like being a little tighter with it, like maybe one bus wins more than they should.
Well, the walker, the walkers were like that.
Yeah, we were winning a lot.
I wonder why.
I wasn't giving them out, okay? It was somebody else. But, you know, I was right there saying, let's, let's earn some bucks. You know, like put your singles on, sit quiet.
She did.
I would come to school at five, you know. But, um, yes, and then you say, hey, you could give some more bus bucks out, you know, where I think you're being a little stingy, you know, let's.
But 16 can't win every week.
No, no, and we do kind of keep track and again, catch them being good so that they do have, you know, equal opportunity.
Sometimes the bus drivers are a little too competitive too. So, I'm like, okay, are we giving them that?
We, oh, they relinquish it, they don't want to give it back on that there.
Yeah.
It gets lost. Oh, we had it, they lost it.
Lost on the dashboard, yeah.
They're all going to want to drive when they sign up for, for next year.
That's right, that's right, that's right. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you shared this with Sucky Trasportation?
I know, we would have, we would have shared it at the meeting. That would have been really good. I bet the drivers are talking about it. Okay. Now, good luck, you know, listen, good luck, Dan. Come on up. Do you got any kind of Battle of the Buses? And Ms. Peterson for the IB diploma, IB career-related certificate, ho-hum.
I might even give you guys some statistics, you know? Things like, like.
Our year group is going to be as colorful as ever.
I think our slides are good.
There's no more, is there?
I think our slides are okay.
They're good.
Yeah.
He has some fun graphics.
Yeah. Hi, everybody, good evening. How are you? I'm going to wear two hats this evening, first as the IB coordinator and later as a union rep. So, I'll see you again. So, we're here tonight to give you some updates about the IB program, including, of course, the career-related program that Kathleen is going to talk about, where most of the cool stuff is happening. You know, a lot of sort of business as usual stuff for me, but definitely some things that you should know about that are happening. And I also might require a little bit of help from some of you, so that's to come. So, for me, we're talking about, there's, we're in the middle of a five-year evaluation. This is something that IB does every five years. It forces me and us to do a lot of paperwork, to update policies, to make sure that they're in line with the IB's mission. And it also requires something called a self-study. I don't know if any of you remember being a part of a self-study about five years ago with John. John retired the year before this was going to happen on purpose.
You're pretty common.
Absolutely, 100% true. So, self-study will involve some asking people, community members, students, teachers, to give feedback about the program, how it's going, you know, where it should go. And there, some of the questionnaires are pretty long. I've created new ones for community members and parents that I think are a little bit more user-friendly. The teachers are going to have a lot of work to do with this, but that's okay. Part of the self-study also includes a program development plan, which is something that we, we are doing every year. We're adding things and thinking about how do we make this program better? And how does, you know, the tenets of IB filter out into the school as a whole as well? So, that's something that we've been working on last year, I'll be a little more specific about it. We had a one-day Denmark exchange this year, that is it. That won't happen until next year where we do the, they come here, I go there, et cetera. I'll give you some statistics. And then in June, we are having a visit from IB specifically for the diploma program, June 1st through 3rd. And again, I may ask some people to come in for some focus groups during that time. So, you may be included in that or asked and hopefully some of you will be available. Okay, so what is the self-study? Well, it's really to foster conversations with teachers about the program. It's to ask people like administrators to weigh in on the program. It's also to revisit our school district policies. So, we take a look at basically a lot of the major policies, like for example, the academic integrity policy. And we revisit it and we revise it and we modernize it. And that's one that we're going to talk about a little bit more. Reflect on what's working, what's not working. And of course, engage our students to see how they feel about the program, including graduates. So, that's the function of it. I think it's a really good thing, actually. It's a little bit onerous and annoying and sort of bureaucratic feeling. But at the end of the day, I do think that it's a valuable process. So, what is our program development plan? So, we decided that we should focus not only just on academic integrity, but also on AI and, and how we're going to address that in the academic integrity policy, which we did. We had a committee together with Mr. Gordon and others and, and teachers in which we talked about not only, you know, punitive measures to talk about the malpractice when students do things that aren't, you know, academically honest, but also to think about the value of AI and just frankly, the ubiquity of it. The fact that it's going to be in our world and that we are, you know, we can't fight it entirely. And the IB has a lot of stances on this as well. And they sort of delineate certain ways in which students can interact with AI that are good and ways in which they are not. And we have to kind of decide for ourselves as a school district and as a community, what those, what our lines are and what we think is valuable for students as they enter college and adulthood. Because frankly, I mean, I think we all are anticipating that the, the job landscape is going to change and the, everything is going to change in a lot of ways, right? A lot of professions are going to be completely different and we have to pivot. So, I thought, what better time and what a better opportunity than, you know, thinking about our IB program as sort of a flagship program in the school to, to help us maybe lead the way in adapting our, our academic integrity and AI program. So, that's part of this five-year evaluation. That is also, you know, sort of integrated with the self-study. All right, so that's that. A couple of statistics as promised, the icing on the cake. Last year, we had 24 diploma candidates. 20 of them earned the diploma. Obviously, it's an 80% success rate. This is in line with the world as a whole. It's in line with our past years. And it's a really great success story here in Bay Shore, as you know. We have a very open enrollment policy for the IB program. So, the fact that we continue to have that level of success is, is pretty remarkable when you consider how much of IB inhabits private schools and tiny little European schools and where it is in the world and that we're a large public school. To have the same, same success rate as the rest of the world is, I think, a really remarkable feat. And the same is, is true of our exams. So, the students who are just certificate students who take IB exams, we have an 81% in terms of satisfactory achievement rate. And we have so many different kids. I mean, just to give you an example, IB history exam, this, this May is going to be given to about 125 of our seniors. So, that represents a large percentage of, of our graduating class. And so, those are all included in those kind of statistics for the test. So, a lot of people, a lot of kids are taking these exams who are not full diploma kids. So, you know, the IB program is more than just the, you know, small subset of kids who are in diploma, as many of you know, as parents and otherwise.
What number is satisfactory?
Uh, four. Yeah, so you have to get a four. So, on the October 8th, we had a group of 25 Danes come because they were in New York and they couldn't get a placement with a school. And they, they came out and they were, they were like overjoyed with the day. I mean, it was for them, it was, because it was a one-day thing, it was, it was, you know, this thing in Bay Shore is just beautiful school. And it just feels like they were, they felt like they were walking into a movie. You know, it's because school is so different there. And it just felt like it's America, typical American high school. And they went to a girl's soccer game and it was a really great day. So, we're still keeping obviously that relationship and we'll be talking about that a little bit more next year. And Kathleen, it's you.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm going to give you an update on the career program, about the program requirements and the career-related study pathways. We have some updates, a little bit more about the core and then our authorization timeline. So, as you know, in order for a student to join the career-related study, they have to choose a career-related study that we're going to offer. Our first two are going to be business management and entrepreneurship and then healthcare industry and technology. They will also complete two or more IB diploma courses. So, we're hoping a lot of those students who are choosing to be certificate students, like Dan was mentioning, those students, if they're choosing one of those careers in the future, they might become now our career program students. And then they also need to complete the core, which I'll talk about in a second. So, we're entering a partnership with Northwell Health to accredit our pathways. The reason for that is that IB requires it. So, IB requires that we connect with an employer organization or a professional organization that can say that our coursework is me... that can say that our coursework is meaningful and will help them in their future careers. So, Northwell Health is going to accredit that. The two years of coursework that we're offering plus Northwell Next curriculum will lead to students being more prepared to enter those careers. Northwell Next is a pretty neat curriculum. They're actually going to create separate pathways for both our business students and the healthcare industry students. And when they complete the program for us, that information, the fact that they've completed a Northwell Next program, goes to talent acquisition at Northwell Health. And then when they go to apply for a job at Northwell, there's like a little star next to their name that says that they've completed a Northwell Next curriculum, and that's meaningful for them as a future employer, which is pretty exciting. So, our core for the career-related study includes personal and professional skills, which is that two-year course that meets every other day for the two years. But also, within that course, we're also going to have time for, there's guided instruction required for community engagement. There's guided instruction for language and cultural studies. So, it ends up, it's called personal and professional skills, but it ends up really being like the career program hub, where like they kind of can get those other pieces of guided instruction that are required for the program. So, we reached another milestone, we had our consultancy visit last week. Our IB consultant came for two days and met with guidance counselors and teachers and administrators and students and parents to get a feel for why we're bringing the career program in, what it means to our school. My favorite thing that he said was, after meeting with everybody and hearing about all of the programs we have, the fact that we were, that inject, you know, everyone was so excited to bring on a new program, he's like, you're doing what's good for kids. Like, that's what he, that's what he kept saying over and over again. I thought that was such a great thing to hear about our school community. We will get a report from him and soon, hopefully, and then the application for authorization will open up. Then we have another visit, which is a little bigger of a show, I will also need you for that most likely, called the verification visit. And then our first cohort of students will be for September of 2026. As a department, you know, as a program, our, now we're in, you know, kind of recruitment, and that starts next week with APIB night. So, we'll be sharing about the career program and also the diploma program that week, and then we'll start meeting with our 10th grade students, because they'll be kind of first eligible since this is junior, senior year, just like the diploma.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I just, I have one recommendation when you get to that point.
Yeah.
If you can like almost put together like sample schedules with the kids, because I think this is kind of hard to conceptualize because it's not being done.
Yeah.
Has, as a recent high school parent, like even IB, even though it had been talked about for years,
Right.
was very confusing to me, and I'm still, I think I got it, but I'm not.
So, some sample schedules.
I think those like sample schedules or something visual where they can be like, okay, this is what my life would look like if I do this.
Yeah, that's a great idea, for sure.
This is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the really fun stuff. Mr. Rotella, Mr. Rotella, you're up with the first field trip request for the cultural arts department. Let's go. Do you have anything, do you have any slides?
I have paperwork. I'm old school. So. First of all, congratulations on Board of Ed Appreciation Night. Thanks for having me, thanks for hearing the trips. I have two trips that I'd like to present that we're really excited about this year. I'll start with the Nastia trip, which goes to the Villa Roma Resort in Calicoon, New York, which we've been doing since 2016, actually. There'll be 25 students and four chaperones, two teachers and two parents that'll be going on the trip. The parents will be paying for themselves, the drama club will be paying for the teachers. So, it should be no cost to the district on that. Brentwood is also splitting the bus with us. Every year, the district gives us a bus to take up to, to the conference, which is awesome. And Brentwood joins us in that and then splits the cost, gives us a check, and we turn it back into the district. It usually is based on the number of students coming from each school. So, this year, we have 25 students going, Brentwood only has 14 this year. So, it won't be as big a reimbursement as we're used to getting. The cost of the trip is $315, and then with the theater sponsors donation of $3,000, it brings the cost down to $195, which is pretty neat. You know, so the, the drama, the theater sponsors always give a donation to us, and we apply that right to the trip. We also offset the cost of the trip with community events. We, we sing, we carol in the streets, they give donations, we put that right towards it. So, we try and make the cost as doable for the students as we can. So, the bus, the bus will cost $48.84, and then that will be split with Brentwood based on the number of students that are coming. The students have to be in grades 10 through 12, they have to be a member of the Thespian Society, and the only school that they'll be missing is the half-day, the day they leave. So, they'll be there for the morning and then half-day they'll, they'll take off. Okay?
How do they get to pick, what, what if more kids wanted to go?
Well, it's capped at 25 from, from the actual place, so we can't, we can't take more than that. So, it's a first come, first come, first served.
Okay, just curious.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah.
And then the second trip, which I'm really excited about because we haven't done this in, in three years, and we're going to Hershey Park. And that's a music in the parks, which is, which is an amazing experience, I don't know if any of you have ever gone? Did you, have you gone?
No, but I might have to go this year.
Yeah, you have to go this year.
Is this the same thing they did at Williamsburg?
Yes, same thing. This, this one is in Hershey, but they do them all over the place. So, this one is now, I can't give you a lot of information on this one because a lot of what's given to us from the Four Winds Travel Group is based on the number of students. Since we haven't handed out any permission slips or anything like that, yet we don't know how many students have been. So, we can't tell you the hotel yet, because that's based on the number of students as well, and the number of chaperones. But there is one chaperone for every 10 students that is covered by the Four Winds Group. So, we'll have plenty of chaperones, if we have 150, because we're taking three buses. So, the most we could take is, is 150, because they're 55-seat buses. That would be if it was 15 chaperones. Four of those are definitely teachers because it's all four groups. So, all four of those teachers will be going a chaperones. The cost is $480 per person, it's broken into four installments, that's for two days and one night. And they do a fundraiser with Miss Chocolate, if any of you know that it's the candy bar. They do that to offset the cost of the trip. Transportation was included in the whole thing, you have to be a member of one of the four groups, which are the two choir groups, the orchestra and the band, wind ensemble and symphonic band, which most likely will be combining for the performances based on instrumentation when we, when the students select whether they're going or not. Students will miss a half-day also on that Friday, they'll leave after fourth period, so it's a half-day that they're missing. And the students that do not attend the trip will have a regular day of school. So, they'll be there, there's an alternate assignment given in those classes for the kids that can't go or don't want to go.
Okay. And Four Winds, I see pays for the hotel security?
Yes, there'll be extra security put there, yep, which is great. We usually do our own security anyway.
I'm sure.
But it's nice to have extra people around.
Yeah, for sure.
You said that they can't. But just get the buses and make sure they're all inspected, tires, all that stuff. Something we're going to be, you know, keeping an eye on the whole time.
Yeah, we implemented a process last year, so typically it's the high school head custodian or a security guard that reviews all protocol of some basic things to check out before. We worked with Suffolk Transportation on developing that. So, it's like looking at the tires, the windshield, a lot of the safety components, making sure.
Hampton Jitney has their own place, not like the other one that we were contracting out, so Hampton Jitney will probably supply you with all of that stuff because they do say a lot with, with an inspection plan and they date all their tires and that stuff.
Yeah, and then we, we follow up with the, the driver, and the driver, you know, is supposed to show all of those components, making sure the hatches opens, everything like that, so.
We even look, we even look in the wheel wells, if I remember correctly, correct?
Yeah, we were out there.
Mr. Rotella's been trained. I have been trained.
Your compartments are tight.
Yeah. That's very good, very good.
Sounds good.
I'm sorry, Andy, what?
No, it's, it's good, because it actually jumps off of that. So, I see that they, they can't leave until 10 o'clock, which means they're going to get there a little bit later, and then they have the competition that evening, and the reason given is because it has to be within the driver's schedule. Can I, do you know more about that?
I wish I knew more about that, but I know they have a certain amount of hours that they can drive, and then they have to rest. So, however many hours that is, that's the way they set up the trip, based on those hours.
But I'm just curious, like, the trip is the trip, so if they're driving for five hours, they're driving for five hours, whether they leave at 6:00 in the morning or not. So, there must be something more to it than they can't leave before this time for this reason.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying you know it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what it is, but I'm assuming that's probably when they want them there in the parks. That's, I, from years ago, when I used to do it, I remember that being the case. We had to be there at a certain time, and if you got there too early, I'm not sure if it's the same way, I could find that out, obviously.
If you could just look into that, I'm just.
Yeah, I will.
No, they're not going straight to the park, though, that's the thing, they're going to their competition that evening. And I just, like, so part of it is that they have a good competition, right? Aside from them having fun, and I get that. So, so I just, I found that a little bit odd that they were getting there and more or less going to have to compete right away.
Gotcha.
So, if you could just.
Let me check into that, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Not exactly sure, I remember that being the case years ago.
I was just curious about that, because certainly, the, the fun I get, but I thought the competition, it might impact them adversely getting there that late.
I, I do want to say competition in quotes, though. Because everybody kind of does come out with trophies.
You might have just answered the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, Mr. Pashkin.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, I, that was, and I want to thank Mr. Rotella for coming and doing a great job with those field trips. I have a few others for you to review, one is from athletics. It's for a track and field trip, taking place in December. This is a event that we typically participate in. Just a note, there are four adults attending, it says on your sheet, and that was one of the questions I asked, I said.
Two?
I can guess, do I have two people? But no, it's four, he spoke with the, the coaches, so that's just something that needs to get updated. We have done this before, and the students cover the hotel cost, which is typical for our athletic events, and then we pick up the remainder of the cost. So, that is, from what I checked, over the weekend, I don't think there, the students are missing any school for this particular trip, and again, it's part of their competition that they typically do. Yes.
There's usually one right after two.
They do a lot, yeah, they do a lot.
Yeah.
I feel like in the winter especially, the armory. Questions on that, good?
Yep.
Okay. You should also have a, a field trip request for robotics, and this one is taking place in April. So, this particular trip is not one that we have done before, and speaking to Mr. Leach and Mr. Claiborne, typically we do the Hofstra competition. They actually felt that this would give the group a little bit of a better chance to advance to nationals, so we have a little strategy here. And going to this particular event, the kids are paying for the hotel and the bus, and we are covering the registration fee. The nice part about this scenario is there must be some connection, and I, we, I wasn't able to get exactly who, but the Stroke and Brain Aneurysm Center of Long Island is giving a significant donation to reduce the cost. So, the cost that you see on there, the expected cost for the students is now down to approximately $340 before fundraising. So, that means it could be reduced even further to, to individual fundraising for the students, and they are also splitting part of the bus cost with Lindenhurst, which is something that we have done before as well. So, they're looking to, I do believe that there are a few days that they have to take off from school, which is typical. Even the Hofstra competition, they usually miss Thursday, Friday from school because they are taking place on school days. So, so that's what I have for that particular trip.
Why is, why is the transportation so expensive?
I was just going to say that, the other one, it's like, Albany's like five hours, Pennsylvania's like five hours, but what about?
The bus doesn't come home, it stays up there.
Right, but the one.
Oh, and it's four days.
Yes.
So, it's longer.
Oh, it's multiple, okay.
Yeah.
Does that also include getting their robots up there too?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, I believe, I don't, I, don't quote me on that, but I believe that's part of that, yeah, they need, they need to get those up there. But I don't know that they take an extra, you know, but I think it's part of what they, what they're doing. But they also have a lot of support, so there might be people bringing equipment with them.
Which just seemed, it seems so much more compared to the other two.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, that's it. And then we have policies, Dr. Outlaw?
Rob is going to join me because he follows the presentation right after, so we'll stand, we'll stand together as we generally do. We stand together, the two of us. And so, for the first one, the first read for policy 9700, which is on staff development, is the one that I'll be covering. It's a local policy that exemplifies the value that's placed on staff development by the board, and the policy's adoption demonstrates the importance of training to ensure the success of the educational programs used in the district, which ultimately results in, of course, our students' success. So, the recommended modifications to policy 9700 are minimal. As you can see, the update just reduces the number of required professional development hours for teachers holding a professional certification from 175 hours to 100 hours, as noted in the third bullet that's there. This change directly reflects the revisions made in the state regulations. There's a highlighted section there that you see as the fifth bullet, and that's just a statement indicating that unless an exemption is provided by the Commissioner of Education, the district will provide professional development opportunities for teachers to address the needs of English language learners. And then the final modification, which is on that second page, looks at specifics with regard to that 100 hours. What's noted is that those who are holding the certificates must have 15% of that 100 hours reflecting training to address the language acquisition needs of English language learners. And so, all of the other items in the policy, which were, was previously adopted by the board, remain the exact same. And so, are there any aspects of the policy or what was shared that you have any questions about or would like additional information around?
So, that 15% is for every staff, every tier?
Yes, the 15, yes, those who are professional or who hold a professional certification. All right, thank you, I'll turn it over to my buddy.
Thank you, Dr. Outlaw. So, the other policy that you have is the homebound instruction policy. I'm going to give you a little bit of background here because this is quite confusing and it's a good one definitely to focus on. There are two different aspects to home instruction that the state uses, and they use that term, and for some reason, they did not pick a different term. So, there is home instruction, and that is when a parent chooses to instruct their child from home. That is the parent's choice, and that is the parent's responsibility to do that. The other instruction is called homebound instruction, and that is when a student is unable to attend school due to either a medical, emotional, or mental diagnosis from a provider that is indicating for a certain amount of days over a, a, over a 30-day period that they're out of school. And in that case, the district is required to provide instruction. We typically refer to that as home tutoring. All right, so this home instruction, and we call this homebound instruction, we call it home tutoring. I don't know why they didn't pick a different term for it, because it is quite confusing. The policy that we're talking about tonight is homebound instruction. There have been some significant changes, you have it in your packet. This policy is a little bit longer now than it used to be, and that's also because they have changed some of the regulations and the requirements. So, in that first section, it discusses why there were some changes, there were some new state regulations. If you skip to the part that is the first highlighted section, that's when it talks about what homebound instruction is.
talks about, um, what homebound instruction is, and what is, uh, what quantifies home instruction. Uh, the next section focuses on the eligibility for home instruction and homebound instruction, and that's something that we are used to, and that usually goes through our medical offices, our nurse's office, they provide, and then they reach out to the buildings that handle home tutoring, like, as we refer to. The instructional hour requirement has changed since our policy was in place a number of years ago, so this is, again, a good one to update. Uh, it used to be 10 hours, uh, per, uh, per week for secondary students, and five per elementary students, that has increased by five to each, so it's 15 per secondary and 10 for elementary students per week. So that is something that we obviously would want to update. The next section focuses on, uh, credits and act, and earning academic credits by recruit, by, uh, completing the required work. Uh, the next section focuses on the service providers, and the location, and where it can take place, and does give some different options. We have been using home tutors that are certified teachers for many years. You can also utilize organizations if you want, and there's also some options for remote instruction as well. Uh, the next section focuses on the, the instruction delivery plan, and the final section, which was not in there before, focuses on suspended students, and that's something that we have always provided, is home tutoring for suspended students, uh, who are suspended out of school for a extended period of time, and it goes into the different, the different options for that, but that's something we've been very consistent with, to provide our students, even if we don't have to, to provide our students with the instruction they need in order to maintain their classes and seek and get to graduation. So we've always done that before. So, uh, for this particular read, I gave you just the entire policy. Obviously, we're going to take out some pieces that are no longer valid based on the date, make some of those adjustments, and then by the second read. Um, but I just wanted to see if you had any additional questions that I can try to answer for you.
So, on the second page, second paragraph, um, one of the last highlighted lines, is homebound instruction may include remote instruction, you know, as defined by regulations.
Yes.
Um, do we ever u, utilize that?
Sometimes.
What would be the case for that?
Uh, it...
Hospitalizations?
It could be, uh, it could be a hospitalization, it could be another medical scenario where the student is having difficulty, um, in, you know, receiving the instruction in person. Uh, we have sometimes provided that, you know, in, in unique situations. I think overall, we found that in-person instruction is much better.
Yeah, we learned that.
Uh, but there's also a convenience to being able to find the time for both the instructor and the parent, so sometimes that works out better. A lot of times, it depends on the student, but, um, but we do use it from time to time.
Sometimes a hard to staff subject area.
Yeah, okay.
Good question.
Um, is, the, that's a pretty big, um, jump in requirement, is that gonna put a tax on what we have for homebound instructors?
It does add to the cost, yes. Yeah, it is something that will increase, that we have, that, that the entire state has to, you know, all the districts have to comply with.
Another unfunded?
Another unfunded mandate, that's correct, no. No, distal. Any other questions on that? Thanks. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a few minutes, um, can I get a motion to go out of work?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Carrie, we have 10 minutes, we don't usually start ahead of time, so we're not gonna do that, I think we're gonna walk over and see the volleyball game for 10 minutes.
You need your voice on?
No.
We're good? Okay, we're going to get started. Welcome. We have our public session. Can I get a motion to go into public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Did I hear?
I hear you.
Oh, you believe. All right. Lou, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will start if there are any questions or comments on agenda items only. Any comments or questions on agenda items? Okay. We had discussed we're going to do a consent agenda on many of the items. If you don't know, there's a big game going on in the gym, so we figured if we consent agenda, we can get as many people, a few more people in to watch the game. So we'll start with A1, which is...
I'm going to recognize you guys first.
Okay. Go ahead. Do I have to say something?
No, not yet. You're going to say something about the other recognitions that we're going to have. But again, welcome already. Thank you for coming to our board meeting. Again, this is Board Appreciation Month, and I wanted to recognize the volunteers in our community who spend a lot of time, not only in the board meetings, but in the community, doing what is best for all of the students of Bay Shore and the Bay Shore community. I want to honor tonight Susan Gargan, our president, Bay Shore grad; Andrew Akery, also a Bay Shore grad; Guy Leguio had to leave to go to another engagement; Louis Bettinelli, who is also a Bay Shore grad; and Jennifer Brown Yard, who is...
A long-time Bay Shore resident.
And again, I also want to thank David Birdy, who is our student board member. Again, it's his first year on the board and he's really led a great voice to the students of Bay Shore. So we want to thank you. Hey, you do that. You got to wait a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're rushing it. You're taking my flow.
I'm sorry, sorry.
From what I was supposed to say. But again, the board represents 60, over 60 years of experience to Bay Shore. So we want to thank them for everything that they do to really advocate, not only for the Bay Shore School District, advocate for education in general, not only in Bay Shore, on Long Island, but in New York State. They're involved in many organizations, so we thank you for everything that you do for us. And we do have a small token of our appreciation, and Susan's going to open hers, really just to show our appreciation for what you do. And they're all the same, so we'll open this to Susan.
Oh, this is great.
Many of you know, this year we shared cards on the opening day of school with all of our staff, so there is a collage of the school cards for all of the board members. And I want to thank Mrs. Pygott from Brook Avenue. Brook Avenue...
Thank you.
...art teacher for putting this together, because I could not have done that.
That's fabulous.
But she could have, so we appreciate that.
Oh, that's fabulous.
You really did a beautiful job.
That's fabulous.
So I'm a postcard collector. I have a lot of historical cards, so this is right up my alley. Thank you so much. Really good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also had a small token of appreciation for Suffolk Transportation. That is the umbrellas that are on the tables for you as well. And at this time, we're also going to have a special presentation for you. We're going to have Mr. Rattello and the Harmoniers.
I mean, those umbrellas, just bad luck. That's really nice. They did a really nice job. This might be my favorite part.
Oh, Bay Shore, we, my students, greet thee and pay a tribute here today. For you have well-earned our devotion that time can never take away. And though tomorrow we may leave thee, our hearts will lead us evermore to memories of golden school days we spent at dear Bay Shore. At dear Bay Shore.
I love them. I love them.
(singing) Ah, da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da. Blue skies smiling at me. Nothing but blue skies do I see. Bluebirds singing a song. Nothing but bluebirds all day long. Never saw the sun shining so bright. Never saw things going so right. Notice the days hurrying by. When you're in love, my heart will fly. Oh, bluebirds, all of them gone. Nothing but blue skies from now on. And up. Doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba, doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba, doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba. Doo-ba-doo-ba, da-da-da, doo-ba-doo-ba, da-da-da. Da-da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da-da, doo-ba-doo-ba, da-ra-ra-ra-ra, doo-ba-doo-ba, fa-da-da, doo-ba-doo-ba. Ya-ta-na-na. Da-da-da, bu-doo-ba-da, bu-doo-ba-da-bow. Doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba, skiddi-da-bow. Bip-a-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo-ba-da, bip-a-doo-ba-da. Skidda-doo-da-da-dee, da-ba-doo-ba-dee, da-da-da, doo-dah. Skidda-dee, skidda-doo-doo-ba, bu-da, bu-da. Saw the sun shining so bright. Never saw things going so right. Notice the days hurrying by. When you're in love, my heart will fly. Oh, bluebirds, all of them gone. Nothing but blue skies from now on. Blue skies from now on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to invite Mr. Sullivan to come up.
First it was the Bucks, and now it's the Harmoniers.
Thank you. Someone's looking out for me, huh? Hi, everybody. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the BSCTA, and we really just want to extend our heartfelt thanks for all it is that you do, that you volunteer your time for this. And I think some of you know that I, this is something that's personal to me and in my family, because my wife is also a board member, and I know how much time she dedicates, not only here, but reading policies, looking at emails, all the things that you guys do think about, that you have to process, and the stuff that you kind of have to deal with and not talk about. And the things that you, you know, it's a lot. So from my heart and also from the BSCTA, a heartfelt thanks for all you do for our community, for our teachers, for our kids. So these are for you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot.
And we have a lot of our administrators here as well. And I'm, Mr. Lemke is just, Dr. Lemke, just going to say a quick word.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. On behalf of our association, the BSAA, thank you for all that you do. Boards of education really represent what's best in public education, community volunteers, and the service that you provide. So again, thank you all for your support, your time. Actually, some of the unit members wanted to sing for you. Unfortunately, the Harmoniers are upstaged, so... A small token of our appreciation, they criticized my presentation of it, so then they were going to sing, but they chose not to. So thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that's great. We really appreciate it. Personally, I get a little intimidated and embarrassed by the whole thing. I think we all really enjoy what we're doing and supporting the community and the district, and we appreciate everything that you guys do as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know about that enjoyment part all the time. But I can tell you that what we saw here today with the Harmoniers, what's going on in that gym right now, what we heard from on IB tonight with our students, and when we see our teachers out here like this, that's why we do this. I think I can speak for everyone on that.
Yes.
Amen.
You're here.
Thank you.
Okay, so as I said, we are going to consent most of it so that we can get into the game and be supportive. So we'll just start with A1. Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes of the executive work and public sessions of September 25th, 2025, the executive and work session of October 8th, 2025, and the executive session of October 15th, 2025? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Rob, Mr. Pashkin, can we consent B1 through B14?
Sure, thank you. On page B1 through page B14A, the board will find items for a consent agenda. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. The Cs, we're going to pull a few out. So they're fast. Maybe we'll just do those individually. Can we do that? Okay, so who's...
Calling for more.
Okay.
On pages C1 through C2, the board will find consent agenda items. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
The following items, I'll share individually, and there are members here in the audience who were a part of the donation. So on page C3, the board will find a motion to approve the donation of a double-sided grid bike rack to Gardner Manor School. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And a big thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So carried. We also have a certificate of appreciation for donations. If there are people here from Gardner Manor, would you please come forward? And we will... Thank you. Thank you so much.
On page C4, the board will find a motion to approve the donation of $2,000 from the Brook Avenue School PFA. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, so carried. And Brook Avenue is a quarter bed?
Yeah, make note of the coordination.
I want to be here. I want to be here. I'm at the series. I have this one in hand. Yeah, I have hashtrips. It's awesome. Thank you. Well, that's it.
They're really, really nice.
Yeah, they came out great.
And I'll make note that the donation is going toward adaptive swings for the playground, which should be noted. On page C5, the board will find a motion to approve the donation from the South Country School PFA for a bike rack. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. With the South Country PFA.
On pages C6 through C7A, the board will find consent agenda items. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. I guess you're right on with the Ds.
Yeah, move forward with the D pages. On pages D1 through D7, the board will find items requesting consent agenda. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. I'm going to say I'm so excited they're reading The Chronicles of Narnia and A Thousand Splendid Suns. Such good, good books. Go ahead, sorry. I saw that. I got really happy.
On page E1 through page E4, E4A through G, we're going to recommend a consent agenda. We recommend its approval.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, then we move on to any comments. I would like, before we have any comments, read a statement.
They may have just signed in.
Okay. Okay, so on October 22nd, 2025, the district sent a letter to the community regarding allegations involving a high school staff member. When made aware, the district took immediate action, placing the staff member on administrative leave and barring the individual from the district property. The Suffolk County Police Department was immediately notified, and we will continue to fully cooperate with their ongoing investigation. As this is a legal and personnel matter, the district is not able to provide further information at this time. We will continue to act quickly and responsibly in all matters regarding the well-being of our school community. Okay, so is there anybody on there that had wanted to comment tonight or ask a question? Emily? You just signed yourself in?
I just signed myself in.
Okay.
And all three of you?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, you're just waves. Say hi. Anybody is here that would like to say anything or comment or ask a question? All right, then let's get to the game.
Ms. Gargan, can we just finish, can David give his report at the end and finish up with that?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am excited to share the highlights for the month of October across our school district in the monthly student report. So at the UPK, students learned, sorry, I'm going to move this a little bit. Students learned fire safety with a visit from the fire department and organized a successful family movie night. Upcoming, they'll be hosting a storybook parade and a family engagement night. At Brook Avenue School, they held a recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month with a cultural parade and staff luncheon. They also celebrated the fall seasons, participating in homecoming events, a PFA pumpkin patch, and a fall showcase performance. At Fifth Avenue School, students participated in author visits with John Chu and Lauren Long, and they held their Hispanic Heritage Assembly and Puppy Love Staff Mindfulness Program. Against, sorry. Security guard Alfredo Chapman received the Hero Award from the Long Island Coalition Against Bullying. Upcoming, they'll be hosting a Not So Scary Halloween Bash. At Mary G. Clarkson School, they were the recipient of a $5,000 grant from the Burlington store and participated in the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Awesome.
They also celebrated Unity Day with a kindness carnival during recess. At Gardner Manor School, the spectacular PFA event was a huge success and involved high school student volunteers as families enjoyed activities like face painting and an obstacle course. Upcoming, they'll be hosting a Veterans Day breakfast and a Gardner Manor School book parade, where students will showcase vocabulary and a love of reading. At South Country School, they held its first South Country School costume drive, where families donated gently-used costumes for students in need. And upcoming, they'll be hosting a pumpkin decorating contest and a Halloween parade. At the Middle School, the Middle School concluded its Spirit Week by hosting three well-attended fall dances in grade 6, 7, and 8. Upcoming, they'll also be hosting their Student Conference Day, themed Fuel Your Mind, Body, and Spirit, which will feature various activities and guest speakers. Bay Shore High School held its August graduation ceremony, recognizing four members of the class of 2025. And looking ahead, the application window for the fifth cohort of our Northwell Community Scholars will open soon, and eligible freshmen are encouraged to apply. And that includes the October report.
Awesome.
Thank you.
David, you still doing good with the cell phones?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good. That's always good to know. People talking more?
Oh, 100%, yes.
Outstanding.
Day-to-day, I see it, especially in the cafeterias.
Yeah, some games going on?
Oh, yes.
Good, 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 good. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to exit public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.